UbahSutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Here.
Supervisor Blazer.
Here.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Here.
Supervisor Messick.
Here.
All here.
So the Consent Agenda, all matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be action items that are routine and can be enacted in one motion.
Moved and approved.
Do we have any board comment before? Any public comment? And a motion?
A motion.
A second. We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Messick. All in favor?
I'm going to vote no on 112, yes to the rest.
So noted. Any other no votes?
112.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go right into presentations. And first up, we have from California State Association of Counties to present the CSAC 2023 Challenge Award, and we have Graham to do that.
Good morning. My honor.
Can you pronounce your last name?
It's Canaus.
Canaus?
Like knif.
Knif.
It's memorable, but it's actually not true. Yes, I'm Graham Canaus. I'm the CEO of the California State Association of Counties. I'm delighted to be in your board chambers. This is the first time that I have been here. My team has been here previously, and Jaclyn Wong-Hernandez, our chief policy officer who's behind me, will come up in just a moment to talk about this specific related award. But I want to start by just thanking this board because innovation begins with leadership at the board level and the creation of culture in your county that really fosters smart solutions that meet the needs of your communities. And you've done that. And you've done that not just for this year. We were here last year presenting you an award for innovation as well. So that's awesome. And your community really needs to have that understanding of the great leadership that you are providing to them and allowing your department heads, your CAO, and the team to really do the great work to best meet the needs of the community. I'm going to talk a little bit about who we are so folks have some context for what CSAC is and how we got to this award. I will first thank Chair, thank the Chair for being part of us in terms of sitting on the CSAC board. That ensures that Yuba's voice is being heard at an elevated space while we're lobbying on your behalf in Sacramento and in DC. We have been the unified voice for California counties for 129 years, a very, very long time. And our core is really about ensuring that community voices are heard, elevating your priorities at the state and the federal level, and we've done that on a number of different things. We do that best when we hear from you and you are engaged with us, which you have been on for a very long, very long time. At core, our advocacy is about partnering with you to ensure that you can have a community where the resources, the authority, and the flexibility to do things in a way that makes sense to you are in place. And that is a very difficult challenge often, but it's one that we want to make sure that we're partnering with you so that you can best meet those needs. I'm going to reference two really important priorities for us that I think are relevant to this county. The first is related to broadband and ensuring that broadband is accessible to every person residing in your county and across the state. It's a huge issue. We continue to move forward relative to resources that are at the state level to make sure that broadband is being put in and to ensure that there's affordability so that folks can truly access it in their communities. That's one. Second is related to homelessness, which is a significant issue in a number of places. We're thrilled to have, to continue our advocacy journey related to At Home, which is a county-created homelessness solution that includes state, county, and city-related responsibilities. And At Home ultimately is about accountability, transparency, housing. It's about mitigation, I'm sorry, outcomes mitigation, and also ensuring that there's economic opportunity for folks within your community. That's a really important priority, and we learn from you in terms of what's working and what's not working. And actually, this county has been very innovative around homelessness and affordable housing for a number of years. And so huge thanks to you related to that. I want to mention one other program, which is our Grants Initiative, which is more relevant, I think, to a number of rural counties. In many counties, you do not have the internal capacity to access available state and federal dollars. Increasingly, money that is available through the Infrastructure Act, the Inflation Reduction Act, and other federal funding streams requires a whole grant-writing-related process. And so we created the Grants Initiative to partner with counties to ensure that you have awareness of what grant dollars are available and for those where it makes sense to actually partner with us to do the grant writing and that grant-related work to bring those dollars into your community. And so it's something that was the brainchild of our past, past president who came from Siskiyou County and was struggling in that place around it and wanted to make sure that this board was aware of it. Ultimately, our Challenge Award Program is about innovation. It's been around for a number of years, and this past year, we had nearly 400 entries. And out of those 400 entries, there were 14 total Challenge Awards, one of which was earned by this county for some really great work. What I want to do right now is turn it over to Jaclyn Wong-Hernandez, who's going to talk specifically about the great work related to this award, and then we will move forward on presenting that to this board and to the great folks in your Health and Human Services Department. So, ladies and gentlemen, Jaclyn Wong-Hernandez.
Thank you all for having us here today. This is a really, I love the Challenge Awards, and I love being able to present these to counties who are really showing that innovation and the sorts of work that can inspire other counties and lend them practical tips for doing their own versions of these. And so the Challenge Award that we're presenting today is for the Disaster Shelter Activation Exercise that your HHS team. As Graham said, we had more than, or nearly 400 entries in 2023 for the Challenge Awards. And this one is pretty special. As the county faces an increased severity and frequency of extreme weather events, the Yuba County Health and Human Services Department began thinking deeply about how to manage the need for evacuation shelters during these events. And that's an important thing. We've seen it too many times, and it's not going to stop. You know, Yuba, like all counties, faces operational challenges as well as a dearth of training and funding for disaster service workers. And so the county formed the Disaster Response Team to address the outdated guidance and inadequate training that existed. And this included updating policies, conducting internal training with presentations and hands-on sessions, and developing a large-scale Disaster Shelter Activation Exercise to simulate real-life evacuation scenarios. And this exercise was the first of its kind in Yuba County. The entire county HHS department closed for six hours to simulate a real event where all staff is diverted to that sort of disaster response. The county's disaster response team, consisting of key personnel, played a crucial role in the planning and the implementation of the exercise. And as part of that exercise, about 250 Yuba County HHS employees participated in disaster shelter training, which has led to staff feeling more prepared for emergencies, the emergencies we hope never happen, but better to be prepared for them anyway. And as someone was mentioning earlier when we were chatting, to be able to even help your neighboring counties should it not be your disaster, your whole region will be better served. Yuba County plans to conduct the Disaster Shelter Activation Exercise biannually, and the program is highly replicable, which is really significant for other counties, to help ensure staff readiness for disaster response across our state. Because we all know that no county in California is immune to extreme weather disasters. We appreciated learning about this, learning about the work of your county, and Yuba County's commitment to planning and preparedness really impressed our Challenge Award judges, who also appreciated the way that the project took a really collaborative approach. And so we'd like to, I'd like to welcome up the team from your HHS department. You know, it's an honor to present them with a 2023 Challenge Award to them and to the county. And we, you know, we congratulate you and this phenomenal team for the work that you've done, and we look forward to coming up and tapping that talent and asking you to help other counties as we move forward because this will continue to be an issue. So would love to present that award to the team, however you all best want to do that. And I'm not sure if others have things they want to say.
Jennifer, are you out there and your team? Why don't you come on up?
Good morning, Chair, board members, and thank you, CSAC, for this award. We're really honored to get this. This is going to sound kind of crazy. I don't consider myself a super smart guy, but I am smart enough to surround myself with really smart people who do a really great job. So my team was absolutely amazing. I know Jen and our health officer, Dr. Lou, started meeting well over a year ago to try to be proactive in disaster response. Like they mentioned before, we hope we never have to use it, but we are ready in case we do. So with that being said, like I said, I have the best team in the world. They did a majority of the legwork. I'm just the face behind the work that was put in. They were absolutely amazing. And it's not just the team that's here. It's our team back at HHSD. It was, they were all very excited and not that anybody, like I said, wants to open a shelter or anything like that, but they are a lot more prepared, and that took a lot of ease out of their worries. So we were happy to do that. So it's very, we're very honored to accept this reward.
Let's go ahead and welcome the rest of the team up here, the planning team, because we have several people in the audience from HHS.
So ladies and gentlemen, the Yuba County Challenge Award for 2023 and the team that accomplished it. Here they are. Congratulations.
So huge congratulations to this county for the leadership of this board, for the incredible work of your Health and Human Services Department. As someone that used to lead a Health and Human Services Department, I know innovation when I see it, and the collaboration that occurred relative to this is outstanding. It's a model for other counties, whether they're rural or urban across the state, and it's remarkable. And then finally, just to reference how difficult it is for folks to walk into the purpose of public service. Whatever the role in the county, it is of significant import to the community. It is what really pulls the community together and ensures that there's glue, that those that are struggling have some system to assist them, and that all the functions of the county that your community relies on are put in place and function in the most effective way possible. And Yuba does that, and that is awesome and remarkable. So to all of your employees on behalf of CSAC and every elected county supervisor in the state, thank you for the work that you do in your community. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Graham. I've got just a brief comment. We're all very proud of the county and all of the departments, and to be acknowledged by CSAC is very much appreciated. So thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, through the chair, just to echo that, thank you, CSAC, for being here today, and especially thank you to Jen and team for your innovation on this effort and your leadership, and congratulations.
I'd like to say thank you to our staff because we hire only the best and the brightest.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you very much.
So we have a couple of, we have two proclamations coming up. The first one is for the American Red Cross, and I will go to the podium, and if we have somebody from the Red Cross that would like to come up. The second one is going to be acknowledging the Meals on Wheels Month. Take my glasses. Okay, we're honoring March 2024 as American Red Cross Month. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Yuba County and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Yuba County, who simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the lifesaving legacy of Clara Barton, founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by fires and other disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military members, veterans along with their families, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service using vital skills like first aid, CPR, to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crises around the world. Whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. I ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Yuba County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as American Red Cross Month throughout the county of Yuba. In recognition of the important work done by the American Red Cross, we urge and encourage all citizens of Yuba County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, board members. We appreciate this proclamation. I'm not really much of a talker, but my first experience was February of 86, and I'm sure a lot of you locals know that, that month and year being the Linda Flood. That was my first experience walking in as an event-based volunteer, and I found it to be a very rewarding experience. I have continued on, on and off through the decades, deploying nationally and locally and supporting our, sorry, preparedness programs. We have so many aspects with Red Cross, and we are always looking for volunteers, always. We're looking for folks that could help locally with our preparedness programs, to national deployments and regional. We have blood services in different parts of the region. There's so many aspects that folks can get involved, and we're always looking. You can go to redcross.org. You can contact us here at the Yuba City Chapter at 2125 East Onstop Road, and also you can call us at 673-1460. And again, we just, we greatly appreciate this, as this is always an honor to be here for the month of March. Thank you again, Council.
Well, you're obviously a wonderful organization. I think I took a CPR class through Red Cross. Anybody else here has taken any? One, two, three, four, five, four, three?
Well, there's quite a few. So your organization's very much appreciated. So it's a proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we going to get a picture? Now we're going to do a proclamation for Meals on Wheels. Jennifer, I'm going to call you up here for a second, because I believe you have some firsthand experience with Meals on Wheels. And why don't you relate that before I get into the proclamation?
I'm so grateful for the opportunity to recognize Area 4 Agency on Aging for the tremendous work that they've done administering the Meals on Wheels program to older adults and people with disabilities in Yuba County. Thanks to the amazing work of the local team and their volunteers, 275 Yuba Sutter residents received nutritious meals delivered right to their homes. An exciting new component of the program that launched this past year was the addition of a partnership with local restaurants who prepare prepackaged meals, including Two Bits Express in Marysville. I'd like to read a quote to you from a Yuba County resident and a participant in the Meals on Wheels program, Nancy. "The Meals on Wheels program has helped me fill in the gaps in my nutrition. During my chemotherapy treatment, it helps to have a hot meal to look forward to every day. The food is delicious. Please give everyone my thanks and appreciation." Not only does Meals on Wheels offer access to healthy food, they provide opportunities for social connections to support successful aging and enable independence.
Well, as most of us know, food insecurity is becoming a very, very high issue. Do we have somebody here from Meals on Wheels? Yes. I'm done. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then you can say a few words. Glasses. Red Cross. Okay, we are honoring Yuba Sutter Meals on Wheels Month, March of 2024. Whereas since 1972, the National Senior Nutrition Program has funded local programs that serve home-delivered and congregant meals that help to ensure older adults have opportunities to stay healthy, independent, and connected. And whereas Meals on Wheels Yuba Sutter Counties, a direct service of Agency on Aging Area 4, has been one such funded program, supporting the health and independence of our community's aging adults and individuals with disabilities. And whereas Meals on Wheels Yuba Sutter Counties, staff, and volunteers have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to reduce hunger and food insecurity, promote socialization and well-being, and delay the onset of adverse health conditions for homebound adults. And whereas Meals on Wheels Yuba and Sutter Counties is an integral part of Yuba County, providing sustenance and so much more to our older community members, especially those most vulnerable to hunger, food insecurity, social isolation. And whereas the county of Yuba recognizes March as the 52nd anniversary of National Senior Nutrition Program, celebrates the contributions of Meals on Wheels Yuba and Sutter Counties to the health and independence of our county's aging and homebound residents. And whereas that we express our deepest gratitude to the tireless efforts of the staff and volunteers who have dedicated their time and energy to ensure that our homebound neighbors receive not only nutritious meals, but also the companionship and support that they need. Whereas that this proclamation be duly issued and presented to the Meals on Wheels Yuba Sutter as a token of our community's appreciation and admiration for their outstanding service. Now, therefore, the Yuba County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim March 2024 as March for Meals Month, and urge citizens to take time to honor our Meals on Wheels program, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. So very fortunate, in Yuba County, we have a lot of really great volunteers in a variety of different programs. This one is critical. So we would like to give you this proclamation and give you a chance to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors for providing this proclamation to the Agency on Aging Area 4 and the Meals on Wheels Yuba and Sutter Counties. Meals on Wheels Yuba and Sutter Counties has been operating by Agency on Aging Area 4 for 11 years now, and we are humbled by the people we serve. Our meals are vital to over 450 individuals.
Our meals are vital to over 450 individuals. Seventy percent of those are homebound, but all of them are food insecure and heavily rely on our meals and would go hungry otherwise. Our meals and local volunteers are helping these individuals to maintain health, dignity, and independence when no one else is there to support their needs. Our Meals on Wheels Yuba and Sutter Counties also supports the local economy by partnering with local restaurants and catering businesses to prepare all of the meals for the program. And we serve 2,500 meals each week.
Really?
Yes.
How big of an area?
So we serve Yuba and Sutter Counties.
So 2,500 in Yuba and Sutter Counties?
Yes, both. So we truly appreciate this proclamation and ongoing support from the Yuba County Board of Supervisors, and we hope that you'll continue to provide opportunities for grants and other funds to sustain the program and hopefully help us eliminate the waitlist as well.
It's, food insecurity is a rising issue that is really getting a little bit scary. So we really very much appreciate your program.
Thank you very much.
Let's get a photo. Yes.
Can I make a comment about Meals to Wheels? I got, I think every supervisor in, every person in Yuba County should take a ride along someday. I rode along, and you have no idea the difference that you make in people's lives with this program. And it's, it gives you a whole new perspective on government programs. Usually, they're pretty useless most of the time, but Meals on Wheels, they look forward
I'm Matt Riccardi with probation.
to seeing you. It's just something might give you a better perspective.
Probation's up to bat on this quarterly update, and so I'm going to be providing an overview
And I can't let the Red Cross out without saying something about the Red Cross.
of 2023. Before I get started, I just wanted to say that I handed you our business summary, which
1967, they flew me from Vietnam to Chico within 24 hours of an emergency.
is kind of 2023 and our department accomplishments throughout our various divisions. And so if you want to look at that at your leisure, I'll be going over some of those
So thank you very much.
things right now.
Thank you.
So to kick off, one of the biggest things in our department is making sure that our
Andy, anybody else have a comment? Okay, we have another presentation.
mission and our values are lined up with the county's strategic plan. And I believe that our department's mission and values have always been in alignment
We're going to receive a quarterly update from public safety departments.
with that, and we'll continue to do that going forward, as well as with the Yes to Yuba mindset and just overall making, you know, a safe community for our residents. But the key thing is, is that we're unable to accomplish these things without our great staff, the staff are what make us great, and the support from your board, county leadership, our partners in the community is what moves us forward. So I'll start off with our juvenile institutions. So as you know, our 32-bed tri-county youth development center has been in the works for over 10-plus years. And so we're excited. I believe next month, we're actually going to be fully occupying the facility. And this has been something that I know our staff have been looking forward to, and we've also been looking forward to moving the youth into this more trauma-informed space where they can work on their criminogenic needs and find success. So we're very excited for this to move forward. Through Measure K, we were able to add a therapist to the team. And this therapist, their main objective is to work on our family services. And so they've developed parent workshops, individual and group therapy. And we've already seen a 40% increase in engagement with our families in the facility. So it's very promising going forward. As I'm sure you know, you know, youth staying connected with their families is critical. Our Camp Singer program, which is a court commitment program, we have the youth that participate in various community events. And I just wanted to give an update on what they've been doing. So they go over to the Charter School twice weekly to participate in a welding program. And so over there, they're able to participate in various different projects and actually earn certificates that will help them in the future in obtaining employment. A couple other things they're working on, we have the baseball field that sits right over in the corner of our property called Kiono Field. Some of you, maybe you played back there back in the day, I know I did. It's just, it's, over time, it's been neglected, and the league hasn't been able to use it. So I'm excited to announce that we were able to obtain a grant through Marysville Rotary and assist the Little League in actually bringing that ballpark back. And so they put up a new backstop out there and new dugouts, and our camp youth are actually out there renovating the snack bar for them, and they're also going to be building a storage shed on site for them to keep their tools and whatnot for the league. So pretty excited about that. The other thing is, is for the past couple of years, our youth have been involved in a design-build program, which is put on through the Construction Industry Education Foundation. And this is down in Sacramento. It's usually around May. And last year, they participated, and they actually won a Merit Award and a Safety Person of the Year Award. And this is 30-plus schools from around our area that participate in this. And so pretty awesome that the camp youth were able to go down and do that. And so this year, they're actually working on a mobile shower unit, which will eventually land over at Better Way, the temporary housing in Yuba City. So pretty awesome they're doing that. And then just some, some other stats here. Camp has a 91% completion rate, which in my opinion is pretty phenomenal. So our Team Center is located adjacent to the courthouse, and it's basically a one-stop hub for program services for adult probation clients. And also, we have some parole clients that come in there and provide service. As you can see on the right side of the slide there, that's many of our partnerships, and it's really centered around partnerships, you know, hence the team, which means together everyone achieves more. And the biggest, the biggest goal here is just flooding those under our care with as many services as possible in one location, so they're not having to go around all, a bunch of different locations in the community to receive service. Just real quick to touch on a couple highlights, our Diploma and GD program had 36 graduates this last year, which is, which is considerable. We also have our Four Families, which is our Substance Use Disorder program, and they had a 50% increase in enrollment and a 60% success rate. And I think a lot of that can be attributed to the addition of our Substance Abuse Counselor and Intervention Counselor that we now have at the Team Center, thanks to Measure K. So very appreciative for that. For investigations and operations, there's a lot of figures here. The one thing I really wanted to key in on this is, is our pre-trial reports and court investigation reports. When people think about probation, they oftentimes think about what's out in the community and what's visible. But our officers in these units have completed nearly 1,800 mandated reports for the Superior Court. And it's just, there's so much work that goes on behind the scenes, you know, diligent work for the court, getting someone's social history, making appropriate recommendations for sentencing. And there's just a tremendous amount of information that goes into these, and it's just not really something that's, that's visible to the public. And so I really wanted to inform, you know, the board of the work that's done by our officers. Oftentimes, they're commended by the court for their, for their superior investigations, and they just simply, they do a phenomenal job. Our adult supervised population, it's not on here, it's sitting at probably a little over 700 individuals right now under various forms of supervision. I'm not going to go into all those today. It'd probably take quite a while to go over through all those. But we did have 170 successful completions, which, which is good. And unfortunately, in our line of work, you know, there's a lot of inherent failure, you know, and so we really hang our hat on the successes, and, and so it's great to see that. We also participate, as listed, in some monthly ventures through Gang Task Force, Sex Offender Sweeps. And then I just wanted to touch on our Rideshare program that we have at the Sheriff's Department. So what this is, is we have several probation officers that go out monthly with the Sheriff's Department and actually pair up with them. It's not a ride-along or anything. They pair up and go out, and they respond to calls for service and engage in proactive enforcement with the deputies. And so this is huge, because not only does it help the deputies, but it also familiarizes them with those individuals under our supervision, and it just, it creates great relationships with, which ultimately are going to help our community. Speaking of community, our department prides itself on being involved, on being involved in the community. As you can see from the list, these are, I don't know if these are all of them, but these are as many as I could list down. One of the biggest things is just, it's the education, the prevention, the outreach, it's just being involved, you know, and we don't participate in these alone. There's a lot of other county departments, community-based organizations that we jump in and participate in these events with, and some of them are ones that we've been doing for years. Like the Bash Against Cancer, for example, is one through Agents of Change that we participate in, and I believe that's been going for 13, 14 years. So very excited to be involved in the community. But I think the best part of this is kind of where I was, where I was going with it was, is just the collaboration amongst the departments in the community. That's huge. So peer support, the health and well-being of our staff and, you know, the public safety staff as a whole is, is our priority. And so in 2019, we utilized some Measure K funds to start a peer support program. And so what this is, is it's, it's providing supports for staff that have been involved in critical incidents and are experiencing, you know, personal and professional stress. The great thing about this program is, is it doesn't just stay within the public safety entities in the county, is it actually goes out to the schools, to medical staff and others, fire, that are responding to various different incidents in the community. And so as you can see by the hours here, these, these are volunteer hours, you know, and so in 2023, the staff from the Sheriff's Department of Probation provided 428 volunteer hours, and then 1,349 total. And to me, that's, that's staggering, you know, on many different levels, you know, the amount of hours that are put into this. But I couldn't be more proud, and I, I'm going to speak for Sheriff Anderson and DA Curry, that I know that they're proud of our staff as, as well. The other thing with this too is, what's great is in November, we're actually planning to host a state first responder mental health and wellness conference at Hard Rock. So stay tuned, we'll probably have more information out on that. So the next piece on this, I won't do this slide justice like Eric Rungy can, but I wanted to call him up. He's our Victim Witness Program Manager, just to really go over the great work at Victims' Services.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Board. Happy to be here. Always excited to shed a little light on my program whenever given the opportunity, but my chief told me I only get one slide. So our program's made up of about nine staff who do a lot of good work. So we have administrative service officer, two senior advocates, one advocate, an intervention counselor, two full-time therapists, one part-time therapist, a program aide, or probation aide, and then myself. Right now, as you see through the slide here, they did a lot of good work here in 2023. So they actually had contact 3,066 times with clientele. Impact statement, what's an impact statement? An impact statement is a victim's opportunity to speak in court. They actually put together something in writing that they present to the court face-to-face with the defendant or the individual who caused the crime. Sometimes they are too emotional, so my advocates read these statements. Recently, we had a court hearing at Wheatland High School on a DUI case, and some of my advocates ended up reading the impact statements there because the family members were just too distraught to read them themselves. Very impactful. Lots of students saw a DUI case sentencing. Judge Worschafter was there and handed down the sentence. Pretty impactful. Victim Compensation Board, this is a new number the chief asked me to find out. How much money in benefits and services is Yuba County Victim Services providing to our community? So through Victim Compensation Board, we were able to secure $3,318,000 in services and benefits for our clientele. Sexual Assault Response Team, so this is our SART team. They go out on sexual assault calls for adults and minors. They could be called out in the middle of the night, they could go during business hours. But again, we responded to 16 calls at that time through last year. Forensic interviews, so we hold our multidisciplinary interview center there in our office. So what it's designed to do is it's to reduce trauma that a victim, a child victim experiences, either through physical abuse or sexual abuse. They're interviewed one time by a trained forensic interviewer, but in a separate room, we have our team members there who are from the DA's office, probation department, child welfare. My advocates are in there, and probation department's in there. But they get to hear the interview, and they get to ask questions when we take breaks, and then get back to interviewing the child. Again, we did 72 of those forensic interviews. So again, we're talking about 72 child victims of either sexual or physical assault. Dogs. Canine Comfort Program, so we have three dogs. We have Etha, Ruger, and Teddy Bear. They all spend lots of time in court, they spend time in therapy with our kids, but we have a program or an agreement with Health and Human Services, their cat program. Anytime they put a referral out and send it to us, we send a dog to juvenile court. So again, they sit with the kids who experience any child welfare-type issues, and my, my staff take the dogs that, that way. Our current caseload is running about 500 to 600 cases. In 2023, we had 560 cases. That include homicide, sexual assault, domestic violence, child abuse and neglect, molest, hit-and-run, DUI cases, robbery, and property crime. Again, the four major crimes that we deal with mostly is domestic violence, survivors of homicide, physical assault slash rape, or physical assaults. So domestic violence for 2023 was at 44%, so that was down from 22. But survivors of homicide, sexual assault, and physical assault all increased percentage-wise. Survivors of homicide went up 1%, and that was at 9%. Sexual assault and rape went up 1%, that was at 17%. And then physical assault went up 3%. So that was 30% to round off to the 100% we're tracking with those four major crime groups. Victim Services is funded through three major grants, and we all know the state's going through a little, little money issue. So we are preparing ourselves to find other grants should we need them and move forward with this excellent program. Four years ago, I stepped into this, this role, and I can tell you that I stepped into a well-oiled machine. So my stressor is to ensure that this well-oiled machine stays oiled. So with the support of probation and the support of the board, that's what Victim Services is doing, and we appreciate all the support.
Thank you, Eric. You know, and Victim Services are, in, in Yuba County is, is a model program across the state. I mean, it truly is, and Eric might sell himself short, but he's done a phenomenal job leading his team, and our staff out there are amazing. So for our final slide, in April of 2023, we received a grant specific to probation mobile services vehicles. This funding wasn't to be used for anything else, and many counties throughout the state have, have stood up these vehicles. And so we're excited, it's currently being built, and we're hoping to have it out running this fall out in the community. The primary purpose of the vehicle is to assist probationers by bringing services out to the community, you know, and with a focus on those who are unhoused, lacking transportation.
seventeen percent. And then physical assault went up three percent. So that was thirty percent to round off to the hundred percent, uh, we're tracking with those four major crime groups. Um, Victim Services is funded through three major grants. Um, and we all know the state's going through a little, little money issue. Um, so we are preparing ourselves to find other grants should we need them, um, and move forward with this excellent program. Four years ago, I stepped into this, this role, um, and I can tell you that I stepped into a well-oiled machine. So my stressor is to ensure that this well-oiled machine stays oiled. So with the support of probation and the support of the board, um, that's what Victim Services is doing, and we appreciate all the support.
Thank you, Eric. You know, and Victim Services are, in, in Yuba County is, is a model program across the state. I mean, it truly is, and, and Eric might sell himself short, but he's done a phenomenal job leading his team and, and our staff out there are So for our final slide, uh, in April of two thousand and twenty-three, we received a grant, uh, specific to probation mobile services vehicles. This funding wasn't to be used for anything else, and many counties throughout the state have, have stood up these vehicles. And so we're excited. It's currently being built, and we're, we're hoping to have it out running this fall out in the community. Uh, the primary purpose of the vehicle is to assist probationers by bringing services out to the community, you know, and with a focus on those who are unhoused, lacking transportation, or living up in the foothill region. So we also have plans to use this to enhance our community outreach as well. So we're excited for this. Uh, there's, uh, several other projects that we're working on. I wasn't going to go over those today as part of our mission and long-term, uh, plan to promote the health and safety of our community. But that's it for the presentation. Uh, thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any board comments?
Just a, a quick comment. Just want to say thank you. I know when I was first elected, uh, one of the things that I had an opportunity to do was go around and, and meet with each department and learn what that department does. And I have to say that probation was the one that shocked me the most. I mean, I really, in my head, thought I had, um, understood that it was just basically parole. There was probation and parole, and those were synonyms. One was local, one was state. And I quickly learned that you do so many other things that are so important and beneficial for our community. And I also appreciate that you guys are out all over the place. And you, you have booths and you're out in the community, and so it's just really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to take a second to compliment your camp singer kids. I see them at a lot of events. They are so well-behaved and so helpful. So I really appreciate them.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks for the presentation. Next, we have a presentation of Yuba County Broadband Planning and Feasibility Study.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ian Scott. Here with CDSA, here to introduce Shelley Westall from Tilson Technology. Uh, Tilson is the firm that was selected, uh, for the broadband feasibility study we'll be talking about today.
Is this working? Fantastic. Good morning, and thank you for the privilege to speak with you today. I am Shelley Westall. I am a principal consultant for broadband with Tilson Technology. Tilson Technology was engaged by the GSFA, um, to prepare a broadband planning and feasibility, feasibility study for the county, um, which we did and we have presented to the county, um, currently. In part, uh, part of our analysis, uh, for the study was to look at what currently exists in the county, what technology exists, where it's at, um, the, the services, um, and service areas of internet service providers that are operating in the county, um, and the areas that are currently served and unserved. Um, and all of that, we, we did with a focus on, um, the current funding, as that's the big pot of money that we're all looking at, and how, how the current ecosystem either fits or doesn't fit into, to the requirements of each of those funding opportunities. But before I do that, I'd like to recognize our partners in this effort. The EDA, the U.S. Department, um, of Commerce's Economic Development Administration provided the funding for the study. And then, of course, the Golden State Finance Authority, um, administered and managed the program on behalf of its member county. So we'd like to thank them for this. And we really, Tilson looked at the study as really a tool for local government to use, um, to help influence the deployment of broadband to its, its residents. And so that's how we're, um, we've presented this document as really a tool for you. And for today's discussion, I'm going, the focus will be on how to use this tool, how to take advantage of the, uh, information that's in the document. It's two hundred and ninety pages. So I think it's important that we kind of look at it and, um, and discuss how to make it, um, usable for all of you, because it is quite a heavy document. Um, I'll talk a little bit about the outreach, uh, outreach and engagement process, and then, um, kind of outline the study highlights so that it's easy for you to find the information that's important to you. Excellent. So first of all, we did do a series of surveys. Um, we conducted surveys to businesses, internet service providers, and community anchor institutions in the counties. So for the businesses, we used the Chamber of Commerce to distribute the surveys. Um, internet service providers, we gathered that information from the FCC reporting, um, tool, and then also additional research about who's working in the county and providing services. And then community anchor institutions, we gathered that information through the CPUC. So when you look at this document, again, two hundred and ninety pages, we've provided an outline, um, in the executive summary, and this summarizes what you'll find in the document. It also kind of serves as a guidepost for where to find information that is specific to your interests. We've also, um, designed the document to be, um, accessible for everyone regardless of their comfort level with broadband. So through, uh, the section two really covers our, um, the terminology, technology descriptions, and all of those fundamentals that will help the reader in second, excuse me, second and third parts of the document. Um, sections three, four, five are really those characteristics of broadband in the county, where it exists, where it doesn't exist, what the service levels are, um, where, where you might find middle mile, both middle mile, uh, projected middle mile, um, infrastructure, and what exists today. And then, of course, what impacts, besides access to broadband, what impacts adoption? And so we go into a review, review of that in section three with further analysis and section four. Section seven is kind of the highlight of what we're looking at today, and that's the availability of funding, both at the state level and the federal level. And we know there's a lot of funding, but it is in flux. Um, and this takes the, section seven takes the, um, information that you find in section three, four, and five, and really applies that to the different requirements of the funding tranches that are available to the county. So we look at that specifically and define those, those requirements so that the county has a framework to work from when applying for funding. And then section, uh, seven, eight, nine, and ten really get into the meat and potatoes of the recommendations. We're talking about what exists, what should exist, um, in the county, um, recommendations and suggestions for how local government can really influence the deployment and adoption of broadband in the future, and what technologies may assist local government, um, in its future, uh, effort. And then finally, of course, section ten really is all of those recommended steps for furthering deployment of broadband. I'm providing this as just a quick summary, um, so that you have it, but I also understand that it's in flux. So I'm not going to go into detail here. Um, I do know that, that the, uh, BEAT funding, there are some requirements that come along with BEAT. Those are being drafted now, um, and I do recommend that the, that the county really look at the challenge process. That's the next step for BEAT funding, and that is a really important thing for defining where, um, and who is served and unserved in the county. Next slide, please. And then part of our work requirement was to look at smart community technology. And this is really, um, it falls into many categories, both public and private, but, um, it does provide a, a technology recommendations for, you know, how to improve the effectiveness of government, make it accessible to all, and improve the quality of life for residents. So there's a number of recommendations in that section, which is section nine in the document. Next slide, please. And, uh, next steps really are up to you. We have provided the final study with input from county staff, and we look forward to seeing, um, the deployment of broadband in Yuba County from border to border. So that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to entertain any questions.
Do we have any board questions? So, um, we're a little short on broadband, obviously, in the foothills, and I think even District Ten is a little bit light out there too. So, um, looking forward to the final study. Anything else, Ian?
Well, um, a board update, uh, on the broadband issue, uh, generally incorporating the, um, uh, recommendations found in this study, uh, are pending. Um, so I would say, uh, for the board, expect a, a standalone update, uh, that includes this study as well as some other, um, topical items in broadband, um, shortly.
Through, through the chair. Will, will that update also include, uh, current status and proposal from Golden State Connect Authority?
Yes.
Okay, great.
The intent is to wait until the, um, uh, the dust settles on that. Um, that's, that particular project is currently, uh, in a dynamic state right now, uh, being considered at the Public Utility Commission.
Great. Thank you. I look forward to those updates.
Thank you for the updates. Will I do it?
Thanks so much.
All right, thanks, Ian.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So our next section, we're going to go into public communications. And Natalie, you want to read that?
Any person may speak about any subject of concern provided is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of fifteen minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading, and through the chair, I have received no request to speak cards.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to go right into county departments. All matters listed under county departments are action items, which will be considered and voted on separately. First item is one eleven, two thousand and twenty-four, uh, Community Development and Services. Approved plans, specifications, and estimate, and authorize advert, ad- advertisement for bids for the two thousand and twenty-four CSA resurfacing project.
Good morning, Chair, Board members.
Good morning.
Craig Herbert, Public Works. So this, uh, two thousand and twenty-four CSA resurfacing project.
I'm not sure your mic is...
The two thousand and twenty-four CSA resurfacing project, uh, this project was previously approved by the board on April of two thousand and twenty-two, but was postponed due to a conflict with the broadband project that has not, uh, entered into construction as originally anticipated. A public resurface improvement project that is the same as a previously completed, uh, surface improvement project in south of Plumas Lake in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the work consists of cracked ceiling, slurry ceiling, restriping, and replacement of pavement markings. The project is in county service areas fifty-two, fifty-two B, and fifty-two C in the Edgewater community. Uh, Public Works recommends the board approve the planned specs and estimate and authorize advertisement for bid. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any board comments? Um, I have one. It's, um, this affects over a hundred roads.
Yes, sir.
And some of them, maybe only a, 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 really a short amount, a couple hundred yards, maybe, and on up, so.
That's correct. So it's just short of eighteen miles of roadways in almost the entire, uh, Edgewater community.
Roughly what area does, are we covering here?
So it would be north of Earl Road in, like I said, all the Edgewater, uh, community, with the exception of the two recently completed subdivisions.
Yeah. Well, like I said, it's a hundred-plus road, so it could be affected to some degree. So that's great.
Yes, sure. It's just short of eighteen miles of roadways.
Yeah. So no more board comment, any public comment? No. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. It passes.
Thank you.
Next up, number, uh, one-one-four, two thousand and twenty-four. Clerk of the Board Supervisors, receive update on Zoom usage for Board of Supervisors meetings and receive direction. Mary.
Good morning. Let me go ahead and get this up here. Okay, so good morning, Chair Blazer and Board members. Of course, you know me, Mary Piceas, clerk of the board. And then we have two staff members in the office, Natalie Allen and Ezzy Garcia. Uh, the reason for this meeting or this presentation today is to discuss Zoom, what we've been doing for Zoom. And I should go ahead and start off by COVID-19. We know that on March fourth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Newsom declared California a statewide, uh, emergency. He cited numerous, uh, government code sections, and with this emergency in place, he suspended many of the Brown Act requirements that brought Zoom into our Board of Supervisors meetings. Uh, I want to give you a little bit of the COVID teleconference history. With those executive orders, we've had, uh, N twenty-five twenty, which was March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, and then we had N twenty-nine dash twenty, which started March seventeen, two thousand and twenty, and then N thirty-five dash twenty, which started March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. I won't go into a lot of detail because I know you have it all up on your screen. Uh, I do want to go ahead and just mention a little bit on, uh, the authorization to hold the public meetings and to make the public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically, meaning that we could not, uh, actually hold them in public. Uh, it waived the requirement for physical presence of members and other personnel. It suspended the physical posting of each location to the public. And then, of course, as you know, all actions were done by roll call votes. And then, uh, in October first of two thousand and twenty-one, we had Assembly Bill three sixty-one that took effect. That is, uh, Assembly Bill amended the Brown Act regarding the teleconference during the state of emergency. Requirement that we had was a board resolution that was brought to your board every thirty days, which you will all recall. And then, uh, it was to go ahead and, uh, be lifted once the emergency was lifted on the sunset of January first, two thousand and twenty-four, whichever came first. Uh, then on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Assembly Bill two four four nine came into effect, which it limited a lot of the Brown Act for board members, and it was mainly for board members to be able to attend public agency meetings, which provided really complex teleconference procedures. We know that those procedures, there was only two reasons that you could attend, and it was one for just costs, and then the other one was the emergency circumstance. On October seventeenth, twenty-two, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, Governor Newsom announced that the COVID-nineteen state of emergency would be lifted on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. That ended all the executive orders related to the terminated state of emergency. Okay, so what, what did the Yuba County Board of Supervisors do with our Zoom meetings? This is what we did. Our Zoom started on April fourteenth of two thousand and twenty, as that was the only option for us to be able to ho- hold or join our Board of Supervisors meeting. On April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, our Board of Supervisors meetings were available via Zoom and in person. So that's when we started our in-person meetings. Effective November twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three, which was just last November, our Zoom participation was discontinued, and it was replaced with our camp live audio streaming, which is still now in effect. What does our camp live audio streaming do? It allows participants and staff to view the Board of Supervisors meeting in real time. It also, uh, after the meeting is also indexed for public and staff viewing at a later time via our yuba.org website, which is available whenever you want, you want to go ahead and see it. What I've got here is a map of our fifty-eight counties. This is what our, currently our fifty-eight counties are doing. As you can see... As you can see, in red, we have one county, which is Sierra County, that participants only has a meeting via Teams. We have in blue the counties that hold teleconference and audio meetings. And then we have one county, which is Kings County, that has a WebEx meeting. We do have 26 counties that are still participating, that are in yellow, that are still participating via Zoom. As you notice, these are our coastal counties, these are our Sierra region counties. Okay, you will also notice that we have 23, which have no live public option participation. That's in green, and you'll notice that is one of us. You'll notice this is more or less the central region, and so we could go ahead and assume, if I could, that from these no live public option, 23 counties plus the seven, which is a teleconference audio counties, that would be a total of 30 counties that do not have Zoom to the state. They either have audio teleconference, or they have just our regular live audio stream like we have now, live video and audio stream. And you'll notice that some of those counties that do not have Zoom are larger counties, which is San Bernardino, San Diego, Fresno, San Francisco, and Sacramento. Another thing I'd like to point out, that our largest county, which is Los Angeles, it also has teleconference and audio. It does not have Zoom. Now going into our Zoom positives, this is something that is a positive if we continue, if we were to go with Zoom. Public communication would be available to the public with no in-person attendance. Board members would be able to participate remotely to a board meeting within the AB 2449 requirements and limitations. Of course, we know those two limitations are the two that we mentioned, that a quorum of the board members have to be participating from a single location. All roll calls would be, all votes would be roll call votes, and then if any member were not to attend, the teleconference locations had to be identified in the notice on agenda. All locations must be open to the public. So if a member is not attending a meeting here, but is attending remotely, they would have to specify their location. And then public comment has to be allowed at all locations. The two causes that AB 2449 has is the just cause, and I won't go ahead and go through all of them, but you will see that it's got four right there, and it's because of childcare or caregiving need to a child parent or family member, contagious illness, a need to, a need related to a physical or mental disability, or to travel, for the board member to be able to travel to another conference or another public agency. Want to take some water here, because boy mouth does get dry up here. The limitations that we do have there is that the board member has to notify before the meeting and provide a general description of the reason. It can only be used two times per year per board member. It has to disclose if any individuals 18 years or older are present, and they have to disclose their relationship to the board member. The second cause that we have is the emergency circumstance. This is a limited usage. This is 20% of regular meetings in a calendar year, or they can participate two or more if the board meets less than 10 times a year, okay, which normally we meet 23 times, because there's one month in December that we normally don't meet due to Christmas. It has to be a physical or family medical emergency that prevents a member from attending in person. The member must request to participate remotely. He must provide a description of the reason, that is in 20 words or less. No personal medical information disclosed of why he's not able to attend, and then the request has to be approved by the board member. So the board members have to approve it. Zoom negatives. It is a cost. The cost for Zoom, there is a cost for Zoom, and it is a cost to the general fund, which is paid by the constituents of the county. We also have the clerk of the board office personnel. It requires three staff members to assist having Zoom available. We need one clerk to clerk the meeting, as we have now, and then we need one clerk to host the Zoom. And the person clerking or the person hosting the Zoom has control over who enters the meeting, allows the public and staff participation, observes the meeting for unexpected issues. And with that, we're talking about crackers and technical difficulties. They also have the ability to remove participants as needed, and we need another person to monitor our live audio stream champ. Clerk of the board office has to be closed during Board of Supervisors meeting, because if we were to have three staff members assisting Zoom, we would have to direct our phones in public, would have to be referred to another department for assistance. We also have the possibility of illegal action against the county if we were to remove someone from Zoom or some someone who felt that their rights had been discriminated against. So that is another possibility, something we have to look at. And if Zoom has technical difficulties like we have seen in the past, we have to stop the meeting. We cannot continue the meeting without Zoom being available, because it is on the agenda. Moving forward, I wanted to go ahead and give you a little highlight on the public participation. You'll notice here that we have pre-COVID. We've got from 2010 all the way to 2019, we have the total public participation we've had, and this has been without Zoom. Now, when COVID started in 2020, we'll notice that this is a public participation we had. In 2020, we had 28. 2021, we had 84. 2022, we had 54. And then in 2023, we had 47. Okay, this has been with Zoom. You'll notice I've got numbers right beside them, and in 2020, you'll notice 21 of those public comments were due to ICE and due to jail. That's why we had that public participation. In 2021, the 84, it was actually a total of 45, because it was numerous people coming to board meetings or through Zoom announcing COVID vaccine and then opening up the meetings. In 2022, we had 54. 22 of those were actually different people, and then you'll notice that we had three persons actually participating 13 times, another person participated nine times, and another person participated eight times. In 2023, there's 47 total, 16 separate participants, meaning 16 public persons attended. We had two persons that attended 19 times for the thank yous, and another person participated 12 times in regards to drainage. So public participation over the years hasn't changed. Whether we have Zoom or whether we don't have Zoom, it has continued the same. Zoom has been mainly attended by staff. Having hosted plenty of our meetings, I have noticed that staff are the ones that attend our Zoom meetings. If we have two or three public participants, you'll notice through our Zoom meetings, there is hardly any public participation. Our agendas also have the instructions on how the public can provide a public comment if they are unable to attend. We've made it very clear that their comments are important. They can email us, they can phone call to us, and we'll make sure that their email or their comment goes on to the record. Options. Here are the options. You have no Zoom availability. Constituents have the present, have to be present to comment under public communication, or they can send in their comment by email, phone to the clerk of the board office by 5:00 PM the previous day of the Board of Supervisors meeting, which is on the agenda, which will then be read into the record with all the information that is listed on the agenda. Board members do have to be present, and only two office staff are required. If we continue with Zoom, the public can comment under public communication with Zoom, we would need to add a disclaimer to our agenda regarding continuing the meeting if they are continuing with the meeting if they are issues with Zoom, which that is a disclaimer that we can add. Board members would need to follow the AB 2449 restrictions, and of course, the possibility of hackers interrupting our meeting, which could lead to risk of potential litigations. And for that, we would need three office staff would be required. Zoom available upon need, topics that are important to constituents, board members unavailable to attend in person only via Zoom. This is something that we can make available on our agendas if the board wishes, that if there's a, like, we would call it a hot topic or something, we know that constituents would really want to participate via Zoom and are unable to, that is something that we can do it for that meeting. We would just definitely have to have it published ahead of time. That is all I have. So the reason for this was to receive further direction.
Through the chair.
Thanks, Mary. Go ahead, Gary.
So no questions, but I do have a few comments. So first of all, thank you for the really thorough presentation. I think it did a great job of talking about the advantages of having Zoom, the disadvantages of having Zoom. I think that was very accurate and very true, and so thank you. I also wanted to say I appreciate the county having the Champ live streaming that we have right now, as well as a live stream Yuba Center, who carries it on Facebook Live. That's great for people who want to watch the meeting and view various things. Of course, you know, and what this discussion is about is, do we want the ability for the public to be able to participate remotely? And I know for me personally, even though I know there are some disadvantages to that, I'm very supportive of the public having that option. You know, one of the things our meetings are during the day, and I know we've tried to have them in the evening, and we get even less public participation. So I think kind of a good middle ground is having that availability. If people are at work, many people maybe could take a break from work, hop on virtually, provide comment, or listen to a particular item that they're very interested in. In addition to that, you know, as a board member, I've been able to take advantage of AB 2449 several times, both for illness and for travel on county business. And if I'm available while I'm out of town, or I feel well enough, I certainly want to participate in the board meeting. I think that's beneficial to my constituents. It's beneficial to the county. And so anyway, those are just my feelings on it. I'm sure some of my fellow board members have comments as well.
Through the chair. Go ahead.
I enjoyed the statistic that 31 out of the 40-ish interactions this last year were thanks to Tony Farley and Tom McQuarter. So that's awesome. And if we were to limit it based on just who was participating, then we would only have meetings for those two people and no one else. But the goal is to have participation by everyone as much as possible. So I would like to make the motion that we have continuous Zoom operations, so that we can try and increase participation in the community, because as we can see from our election turnout, apathy is our enemy.
I'm going to have counsel do a little clarification on what we're doing here.
So this is a presentation with direction only, no need for a motion.
So Mary, we can, you're going to get all of us a copy of this presentation, right?
Correct.
And then we're going to come back with, what are our options? We can come back with a-
So ultimately today, if the board reaches a consensus on what direction they want to go, then the clerk would bring back information or a resolution for the board to approve, to either make a written determination that the board doesn't want Zoom or that the board wants Zoom. That's not what's on today. So just direction to staff of what you'd like to see, and then they'll prepare that.
So we're not going to vote, but each one of us can give our opinion, and then Mary can boil that down to come back with an actual resolution. So anybody else?
I think they should have a more accurate time estimate of the item. These things put five minutes and go 20 minutes, and some go an hour, and just, that would be nice.
Yeah, noted.
People would notice, know how long they got to put up with.
Did you have any opinion on the Zoom?
I, I think it's-
You're good.
Should be thing of the past.
I have a question through the chair. You said that there was a cost for the Zoom. Do you have that cost?
Yes, actually, it's close to 200 a year. We pay it per month, because, and we still continue to pay it because of the not knowing, but it's close to 200.
I, my, I'll give you my opinion, since that's what you asked. Being as my constituents live more than an hour from here, a lot of them, Camp Townville, you know, Challenge and everything, I would like to have them have the ability to Zoom in and participate more, so. It's my opinion.
I think if I had a choice, too, I'd like to see all the constituents have the opportunity to Zoom in, because there's a lot of times, like John said, that people can't physically get here, and they do have an opinion. So if we can boil this down and come back with some kind of a resolution, I think you have a general feeling of how we feel about it, and-
Oh, yes, I do. Something I expected.
And I also have critics in Nevada County and Butte County, and I miss them being able to criticize me over Zoom meetings, so give them the opportunity as well.
Any other direction for Mary?
No, that's sufficient direction. We wouldn't need to open it to public comment, though.
Yes. So we got the board comment. Any public comment? I think I see a hand way over there. Tom McQuarter?
Good morning, board. My name's Tom McQuarter. I live in Oliverst. Ever since it seems that Zoom has come on the scene, as far as being able to make meetings such as this much more accessible to the American public, I just wondered, how did they get slotted in there? Do we not have a Microsoft Teams advocate anywhere? I would like to see that if you guys do decide to make the meetings continue to be accessible through a Zoom-like program, that you should open it up to more competition. Microsoft is an American company, and I was born and raised here, Eagle Scout. I've defended this country, and I would like to see our industries given a chance. So if you do decide to continue with a Zoom-like capability, please open it up to other companies and let the American competitive spirit take place, and, you know, may the winner or the best choice be the winner. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Good input. Okay, we've heard board, public input, there's no vote. I guess we're going to move on. Okay, we're going to go to county department. This is 108, 2024. County Administrator, adopt resolution authorizing county administrator to complete purchase of APNs 02016036, 02016046, 02016056, and 02016057, and approve associated budget adjustment. Kevin?
Yes, good morning, Chair, members of the board. Kevin Mallon, Yuba County Administrator. Apologize for you having to read all four of those assessors' parcel numbers, but it, the property in total is just under 19 acres, but comprised of four separate assessed parcel numbers, so we needed to identify all four. The property is located in the community of Linda, bordered by North Beale Road, Avondale Avenue, and Hammond and Smartville Road. It's currently, for the most part, vacant. There's a couple substandard structures on the property, vegetation, and then there is approximately one acre of this property that's currently occupied by a business that fronts North Beale Road. So the property in question is primarily zoned general commercial. There is a portion of the property that fronts Hammond and Smartville Road that's zoned high desert city residential, and it has been actively marketed over the years and was at a point where the owner reached out to the county for, I guess I would call it assistance. They were at a point where- They 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 were at a point where um they they felt that it that might be the best path forward um for a property that's really in a prime location in Linda um for redevelopment. And uh and so that's that's why this um item is being presented before the board this morning, uh is for the 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 county to, in in the spirit of economic development and really trying to to um improve our communities, uh move a uh a property forward to um, you know, its its full potential.
What stage are we in right now?
So what we're, the stage we're in right now is uh this this was presented to the board, um originally a closed session to to consider whether or not um you wanted to have me move forward with it. We've initiated that process. Uh, the property is currently in escrow. A deposit has been made. Uh, and uh before we can complete uh the 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 process, uh the board in open session needs to um approve a a resolution authorizing uh myself to execute the necessary documents to close escrow.
Do we have any uh board comment on this?
No, but I'll make a motion.
Do we have any public comment? Well, I think I see Tom.
Good morning, Board. Tom McQuarter again, Oliverst. Um, I am not privy to all the information. You guys are. I would like to ask you, and I don't know if you want to respond or not, but have you guys spoken to the board supervisors for our neighbor Sutter County and their infamous Kmart project? And um I know that that's been, you know, a millstone around their neck for better than five years. I would just like to caution and say, hey, you know, uh, it was brought up last night, uh that are we in the business of buying property and developing or, you know, just act as government? Now, I understand there's a need uh and a a desire to develop that property, but uh as a resident here, uh I don't want to get stuck with the bill for too long. And uh so I don't know if you guys have a a plan B or any kind of an insurance uh that we don't uh, you know, end up stuck. And um so just please maybe reach out to them. I don't know if you've already done so, but uh you might want to go talk to them just to, you know, cover all your bases. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Thanks, Tom.
There's one item in there that uh I don't know whether Tom was listening or not or whether we explained it to him. There's uh it's non-general funds being used that has, you know, can has to be used for something similar to this. So if you could give us a little bit.
Yeah, yes, uh it it if I could through the chair. So the proposed, there's a, as part of this item, there's a proposal for the uh resolution to authorize myself to to execute the documents, and then also a budget adjustment. Uh, in in the budget adjustment, uh would uh we would uh take a portion of the county's um American Rescue Plan Act funds uh for this particular purpose to to um invest in this property.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So we have the board comment, we have public comment, and we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are you still up?
Yes, I don't know if you want to read the the next item or not, but.
For one oh seven?
Uh, yes.
Okay. County Administrator is going to do this. Approve amendment number one to employment agreement with Stephen Shear of Uba County Ag Commissioner, sealer of weights and measures, and authorized chair to execute.
Yes, uh, good morning again, Chair. Board members, Kevin Mallon, County Administrator. Uh, it's my pleasure to present uh this item uh to you. Uh, so Stephen Shear um first started as the county's ag commissioner in March of twenty sixteen for a four-year term. Uh, and the board in March of twenty twenty um extended it for a second four-year term. And so the item before you today is to seek the board's approval uh to appoint uh Steve for a third four-year term uh which would run uh through twenty twenty-eight, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-eight, to be specific. Uh, and associated with that appointment would be uh amending um Stephen's um employment agreement with the county to indicate that term change, as well as uh an amendment to the employment agreement to reflect um our current uh rate that we reimburse uh our department heads uh on the vehicle mileage, uh changing it from three hundred per month to five hundred per month, and the associated language that makes it clear on the uh on when that's applicable. Uh, and and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I believe Stephen's here if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions. Uh, Stephen gave us a nice little update, uh, I think last, two weeks ago, on uh the status of his department. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Move to approve.
We uh have public comment, we had board comment, any public comment?
I'll second.
Now we will entertain a motion from Supervisor Vasquez, second from Supervisor Messick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So so Stephen's been dressed very nicely.
Congratulations.
Patrice, Stephen, if you want to come up, if you if you have a few words.
I didn't make a big uh presentation or anything, but I would just like to thank the uh the board and the CEO's office for being very supportive of my, me and my department the last eight years. Um, I consider it a privilege to serve the citizens of Uba County, uh promoting agriculture and protecting its people and the environment, and uh I consider it an honor to continue serving the public as your county ag commissioner for Uba County.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to item one seventeen, twenty twenty-four, human resources. Approve amendment number one to the employment agreement with county administrative officer and authorized chair to execute and adopt resolution to amend the classification system. Basic salary hourly schedule effective March one, twenty twenty-four regarding county administrator. Tiffany?
Good morning. Good morning, your board and chair. Tiffany Manuel, Human Resources Director. Today I have the pleasure to present to your board two items for consideration. The amended employment agreement for county administrator Kevin Mallon and a resolution amending the county's classification system, the basic salary and hourly hourly schedule as it relates to the classification of county administrator. Kevin has been a dedicated employee of Uba County for just over twenty-five years, serving many roles while working working for the county, including Public Works Director and Community Services Director. Over the past four, so I'm sorry, Kevin was first appointed as county administrator in August of twenty twenty. Over the past four years as county administrator, Kevin has led the county with wisdom, confidence, and integrity, and he is uh committed to continuing to serve our county. In compliance with Government Code Section five four nine five three, Section C three, I present to your board the amendments made to the employment agreement. Section three, the termination date of the agreement has been changed from December thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to December thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, with renewals upon the agreement of the parties. Section six, effective March first, twenty twenty-four, changing compensation from a flat rate of twenty-two thousand fifty-one dollars per month to a monthly base pay of sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars that would be increased pursuant to the merit longevity step index table, resulting in a monthly salary of twenty-five thousand one hundred and twelve dollars based upon his years of service. Section six E of the employment agreement has also been amended uh for travel destinations over fifty miles from Marysville. Uh, the employee may elect to either utilize a county vehicle or to be reimbursed mileage at the county mileage rate. Um, this mileage has been increased from the first fifty miles to the first one hundred miles, and this is consistent with other, some other employment agreements. Uh, the fiscal impact to the general fund is approximately fourteen thousand dollars for the remainder of uh the fiscal year, and I'm requesting from your board to approve and the chair to execute Kevin Mallon's amended employment agreement, in addition to approve the resolution amending the county's classification system, basic salary, hourly schedule, uh to now include the classification of county administrator effective March first. Thank you.
Any board comment before we vote? Any public comment? Seeing none, do we have a motion? So moved.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did I hear an opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations, Kevin.
We're gonna move your parking space now.
Thank you, board, for that.
Are you doing acceptance speech or?
An acceptance speech? Uh, well, I I, yeah. You're stuck with me a little bit longer. Right. Thank you for that. And uh I I as an organization, I I'm I'm proud to be um leading the organization under the board's guidance, and uh we've made a lot of great progress uh since since I took the helm uh just under four years ago, and I'm looking forward to the next four years to achieve great things uh for our community. So, thank you.
You did a great job. I really appreciate you, and uh I I look forward to the next uh four years with you. And uh the Midas Touch, uh I'll be super excited to see on those property transactions.
All right, thanks.
Great job, Kevin.
So we're ready for a board and staff members' reports. Um, let's start it with Andy. Do you have anything?
Well, I think we all went to the Bakai Festival, and Seth was assaulted from behind with a piece of candy.
Sutter County.
Yes, and uh had a meeting uh Saturday with with the number of high school students, and uh Janet Siller ended up being there, and uh we're looking forward to the possibility of opening up Friday Night Live again in the same location. Uh, we'll be having a meeting on the thirtieth, but uh the kids are really uh need someplace down here, so that's it.
Seth?
Uh, read Dr. Seuss books for Dr. Seuss Day to the uh special ed kids at Kynock. It was a blast. Um, I highly recommend people who want to be engaged and involved in the community to uh read Dr. Seuss to kids. Uh, it's good stuff. Uh, we had an election recently. Uh, Matthews, uh, looks like he is going to move forward uh with a large amount of the votes, so congratulations to him. Um, Friday, there is a event at Metanoia Church uh for children, uh fundraising. So I need to fill a table. So anybody who cares, who likes kids, if you don't come to my table for the fundraiser, you don't like children. Just that's how that works, so you know. So please contact me so I can fill my table uh for that fundraiser. Uh, there's, I think, a Saint Patty's Day coming up, so alcoholics, be safe. And we have an acting company gala on the twenty-third of March, um, and I invite you to purchase a table to that because my wife is on the board and I am required and obligated to sell tables for that as well.
A few items. Uh, so first of all, I want to thank um county administrator Mallon for coming and speaking at the South Uba County Sunrise Rotary last Thursday. He spoke on the Uba County Strategic Plan and uh did a great job, and it was great uh for my Rotary to hear all about that. Also, a couple of meetings I've attended recently. Last week was a SACOG uh transportation meeting, committee meeting, and uh we talked about things like the Regional Active Transportation um Grant Program, um as well as uh federal funding grant prioritization. Um, SACOG's looking to get behind uh kind of one grant in each category every year uh and really help kind of give a regional um advocacy for those particular grants. And so um I know w- we didn't have one this year, but uh I I think we hope to next year, and I and I definitely uh made that clear. In addition, we had a uh lunch session on the blueprint, um which is the Regional Land Use and Transportation Plan, uh that will will go through twenty fifty. It's required by both the state and federal government to access state and federal funds. Um, I think I've mentioned before, but I'll just reiterate, it's certainly a challenging process as it is both uh fiscally constrained as well as constrained by greenhouse gas uh requirements. So you can't just throw everything you want in there. Uh, you can only put things in there that meet the state's greenhouse gas targets as a whole, as a plan, and then uh align with anticipated funding between now and twenty fifty. And so uh obviously, we want to try to make sure that uh our important projects get in there, um and so we're working uh hard on that. Also, uh, RCRC uh had a transportation committee meeting this week, an ad hoc, uh which I am participating on, and we discussed issues that rural counties are facing. Two issues in particular. One is um the state's one-size-fits-all approach to um being opposed to capacity-increasing projects. Uh, so that's something that rural counties across the state are facing. Actually ties into my previous comment about the blueprint and the state funding of projects. Um, and and then in addition to that, we also talked about challenges and opportunities with respect to the road user fee as a replacement to the gas tax. So uh the committee is is basically gonna um, you know, become educated on these topics and then help shape RCRC's advocacy for rural counties uh on these topics when it comes to the state. And there is an RCRC board meeting tomorrow that I'll be attending, and our guest speaker uh will be actually the Secretary of the Transportation, uh or Secretary of Transportation for the state, and so I'm sure that uh the committee members uh and other RCRC board members will be sharing um some of our concerns uh with respect to transportation funding in the state. I know I will be, so.
That's it.
John?
If I, if I may add one postscript, I'd like to point out one thing. Notice all of the community citizens that are in uh here looking and observing the meeting are from Oliverst, so props again to uh Oliverst being actively engaged in our governmental process. We care.
John?
So I attended the Training Zone ribbon cutting along with a lot of you guys, I think maybe everybody, and uh Honey Barn Decor, Gary and I went to their open out ribbon cutting, I guess it was, in City Marysville. Couple new, well, Training Zone's not new, but Honey Bear is, but the Training Zone is right here next to us. We all don't have an excuse not to be in shape now. Um, I attended the Seniors On The Go Lunch in Dobbins, uh the Area Four um Agency on Aging, did a presentation there, and um it was, it was very informative to the seniors up in Oregon House Dobbins. Um, we're getting a lot of participation um on the, on our county agency on aging now that we have a quorum for that board. We're getting some more funding up into the hills for that. Um, it's gonna be be good. Um, attended a couple of fundraiser dinners, Court of a School PTA dinner Friday night, and Dobbins Oregon House Fire Department Dinner Saturday night, and uh Bakai, we were all in the parade for Bakai. And speaking of Seth getting assaulted by candy, I think we have a consensus that we're no longer gonna do parades where we're not handing candy out. So in addition to riding in the vehicle, we're gonna look for a couple of volunteers to hand candy out since apparently you're not supposed to throw candy.
You got these able to turn fire.
And yeah, and you can only throw candy if it's gonna hit Seth in the head. Um, yeah, this Sunday morning is the uh breakfast at the Loma Rica Lions Club. Uh, it's their ways for tots fundraiser type thing. It's really good breakfast Sunday, guys are available. And I wanted to pitch my dinner that I'm having, May fourth, at the Uba County Airport in Oliverst. It's Uba Sutter Sheriff's Arrow Squadron Fundraising Dinner. Our theme is When Pigs Fly. It's gonna be pulled pork. We're gonna have live music, uh, great band, local band, um, lots of raffle prizes, lots of guns in the raffle, and since I'm the commander of the Arrow Squadron, I will not buy, be buying any raffle tickets, so everybody's odds are gonna go way up because I won't be winning anything at that dinner.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thanks.
County Council?
Nothing from our department. Mr. Chairman, Kelvin?
Funny, maybe the button for me. I I don't think they want me to speak. You know, I always, I gotta push it a bunch of times to finally get it to work. Uh, but I just wanted to remind the board, uh, there was actually a consent item today uh renewing two members to the Measure K Citizen Oversight Committee. Uh, that's a five uh member committee. Uh, we currently only have three committee members, so we're gonna need to be uh seeking out two new uh committee members, uh just so that the board's aware, it's it's at large, you know, there's not, it's not district-specific, but right now, I mean, getting back to a community of participation and wanting to have, you know, participation throughout the county, right now we have Rich Webb, who resides in District One, Fred Morazinski, who who resides in District Five, and Lori Wojten, Wojten, uh, who resides in District Four. So Districts Two and Three um don't have anybody reside represented. So Districts 2 and 3 don't have anybody represented on the committee. It'll be open to all when we open it up, but just something to consider as far as having it spread throughout the community. So there's that. The other one, and Rachel Downs, maybe she's behind the post to me. Yep. I just wanted to make sure the board saw that you received an invitation for an event that Rachel is coordinating on April 11th, on the horizon, where we're inviting our business community. And Rachel, I'm putting you on the spot. Is there anything you want to plug on that particular event for the board? All right. I see Supervisor Fuhr has the invite.
Natalie, did you want to mention anything?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple things. Bakai was a success, in my eyes, no rain, good participation. I did meet with James Corliss from SACOG. We had a good meeting, mainly around trails and the different jurisdictions and all the trails connecting and everybody on the same page. We're still having conversations of trying to convert the Fifth Street Union Pacific Trestle into a pedestrian bikeway, so that's a long, hard process. Anyway, and I wanted to mention one thing that came out of our partner, Yuba Water Agency, that I thought was really interesting. They're in the process of searching and trying to build some massive flanges for their tunnel project. So these things weigh 11 tons each. They're about 15 feet in diameter and 2 feet high. So they released a bid. There was no foundry in the United States that could handle that, so they went to the Planet of Earth, which they have had to do before. They found a couple of different foundries that could maybe do it. One of them unfortunately was in the Ukraine, and it was bombed, so they couldn't use that one. So they did end up using a company in Mexico, Monterrey, Mexico. I just wanted to bring this up because of the scope and size and complexity of some of the things they do over there. Not everybody realizes, but it's not the first time they've had to go to the planet to find certain things, but it's very interesting what they're doing. I think that's all I had. Anybody else? No. So we're going to take about a 10-minute social break, and I think it's 10 till 11. Then we're going to go into closed session.
And good morning from the yubasutter.live news department, where we have news as it's happening, and we also have news before it's news, before it's official. A little update here on what the supervisors are going to be doing this afternoon. They will hold a closed session about appointing a replacement treasure tax collector. The elected post became vacant when Dan Muzo resigned to take that position in Contra Costa County. His replacement would have to run for office in 2026. Another closed session deals with replacing the county council, who's leaving at the end of the month. Supervisor, April 9, I believe, is the date. Supervisors may be interviewing candidates during their last act of the day. That follows a 1:30 PM series of public hearings, including a community forum with the sheriff about immigration's and customs enforcement ICE access to individuals in the county jail. We will probably handle that at 1:30 this afternoon, so come back for our 1:30 update. The supervisors will also be acting on that if there is any action required. Meantime, 3 o'clock this afternoon, you'll be able to watch the Yuba, I should say, let me get graphic up here for you. Get to the right. There we go. Sutter County supervisors will be coming up at 3 o'clock this afternoon. There are lots of items on the consent agenda and a number of proclamations. If you scroll down in our text, you'll be able to see the agenda itself. Click on the link there and find out exactly what Sutter County supervisors are doing today. At 5, we'll livestream that, and then at 5:30, we'll have the Marysville Unified School District Trustees meeting. The district's new science, technology, engineering, math pathway, they call that STEM, S-T-E-M, will be on display, unveiling how it prepares students for jobs that didn't exist 10 years ago, and it will also compare leadership competencies that have changed since 2024. Took a look at that presentation, the PowerPoint you'll see this morning. Very interesting. It also outlines how and where local jobs need these kinds of skill sets, and why this particular idea or concept and activity that they'll be engaging in is important to our community. The district's 2023-24 transportation plan is also up for approval. More about that in a minute. Trustees will also hear how the district-wide strategic arts plan will be put into action, and what the expectations are. That plan up for approval tonight. The district's 2023-24 transportation plan is up for approval, outlining how it will provide free transportation for students in addition to special needs students. The district provides transportation for all of its grade students, with the exception of students who's established bus stop and the school distance is beyond a mile for K through 5 grades, 1 and 1/4 miles for 6th through 8th graders, and 2 and 1/4 miles for high school students. The district's unduplicated count is more than 7,000 students, about almost 7,500 students that need transportation. Total budget for doing this is almost $7 million, $6.913 million. Hiring a new assistant superintendent of Personnel Services is on the agenda, and if you scroll down, you'll find a link to the complete agenda. Then at 7 o'clock tonight, coming up on yubasutter.live, Yuba City Unified School District Trustees Regular Meeting, where they'll act on school site safety plans, school site floor replacements, district-wide network wiring and electronics contracts. Those are some of the major items on the agenda. So is a public hearing to change the fees levied on new residential development from $4.08 a square foot up to $5.17 a square foot for all new residential development within the district's boundaries. New commercial and industrial development would go up from 66 cents a square foot to 84 cents a square foot, and rental self-storage facilities, new construction, would pay 38 cents a square foot. How is the district doing financially? You'll be able to learn more about that as it unveils the second interim financial report for the year. And the end of COVID funding has pink slips poised to hit six of YCUSD's classified workers. Trustees will vote on a link tonight. All of that coming up later today, right here on yubasutter.live. Yuba County Supervisors resuming again here on yubasutter.live at 1:30 this afternoon. Again, Marysville Unified at 5:30, and Sutter County Supervisors at 3 o'clock this afternoon, right here on yubasutter.live. Let's take a look for a moment, if we can, at updated Yuba County election results. The county clerk indicates that they're going to have an update by noon today, and then another update by 8 o'clock on the 13th, that would be Wednesday. So there are a number of unprocessed ballots that they are running through, but the current totals that they have show that Rennick House has a little more than 100-vote lead over Don Blazer in the supervisory District 2 contest in Olivhurst and part of West Linda. And I should say that Supervisor District 2 is District 10. It's also the city of Marysville, the entire city, and the West Linda area. The District 3 area has a small part of Linda. Also, this would be part of southwestern Linda, and Olivhurst. And Seth Fuhr is going to be reelected here. And in District 4, Gary Bradford was running unopposed, so he's automatically reelected. And it looks as though Charlie Matthews is leading the two candidates that were running against him for Yuba County Water Agency North Director. The total here would have to get more than 50% plus one vote in order to avoid having a runoff in November. Looking at the various tax measures that were, or bond measures, I should say, that were on the ballot. Measure S, the Marysville Unified School District Bond, looks like it's being rather resoundingly defeated. Measure T, which is one of the, can't remember whether it's Wheatland or Plumas, Plumas Elementary School Bonds, that one was actually getting approved by a few hundred votes, one of the few that did. Measure U being defeated. Measure V being defeated by not much, a couple of hundred votes there. Measure W also being defeated by 100 or so votes, and Measure X being defeated by several hundred votes. So that's the current information on Yuba County supervisors' races and others in Yuba County, and we'll update Sutter County after the Sutter County Supervisors meeting that begins at 3:30 this afternoon, or 3 o'clock this afternoon, right here on yubasutter.live. So now you know a little bit more about news that's in progress and news before it's official. I'm Ted Langdale, and you are watching yubasutter.live. All of these things being brought to you by our fine friends at Plumas Lake Self Storage.
Yubasutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba,
We get support from folks like Brent Hasty, Gary Bradford, Chris Branscombe, Neil Goforth. You can help too. Very simple. Join the crowd. Support yubasutter.live. You can click the link in the text that's below this video. We welcome your participation, and we thank you for sticking with us on both our YouTube and our Facebook pages and channels. And we've had a number of people that are still watching. Thank you very much for that. You are watching yubasutter.live, which is, for the most part, Yuba Sutter's television station. And we'll be back at about 1:30 this afternoon, a little bit before that, to take a look at what happens during the open session of Yuba County Supervisors as they continue their meeting today. Then, of course, Sutter County Supervisors, which is picking up at 3 o'clock this afternoon. That will be followed by the Marysville Unified School Trustees at 5:30, and at 7 PM, Yuba City Unified School Trustees. That's all happening right here on yubasutter.live. I'm Ted Langdale. Thanks for listening.